Council meeting, call to order. Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation
One nation under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to items to be presented. The first item, number one, we have the Summer Recreation 2020 Update, presented by Leisha Floyd, the Director of Recreation.
Leisha?
I have Leisha's audio, I don't have, or video, her audio might have dropped. Let's move on to the next, and then we'll get Leisha on.
Okay, we are going to move to presentation number two.
Wait, wait, Mela, hold on, let's try to get Leisha back, because hers isn't going to be that long, so we can get her on and I'll text her real quick.
Okay.
Oh, this could be her.
So she's on live.
Go ahead, Leisha, yeah, go ahead, Leisha, sorry.
The floor is yours, Leisha.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Certainly, planning summer recreation has been challenging this year. I just want to briefly tell you about six programs or opportunities that are available for the youth of our community. The first two are specifically for our summer age kids, ages five to 12. As you look on the screen, you see these double bags. These are activity bags. And inside of those bags are things that children can do on their own, such as frisbees, coloring books, crayons, puzzles, cards, that type of thing. It can't really replace the summer camp program, but at least it can provide the kids with some activity, even if for a limited time. The second picture you see are beach cards. And what these beach cards will do, they will allow parents or guardians to take children and their household to the beach free of charge, Monday through Friday, during regular beach bathing hours. Because there's a certain responsibility that comes with going to the beach, our beach supervisor, Joe Bonjavandi, has filmed a PSA through AP-TV, reminding parents and residents of safety tips with regards to being on the beach. Joe also put together a reminder list for parents that I will be distributing to them to remind them of certain things when they are attending the beach. And that's been translated into Spanish and Creole, thanks to the Board of Education. Now, with regards to both of these programs, there will be pre-registration required. That will be done through me, through email. And once a parent indicates that they're interested in receiving one or both of these, they would give me the child's name. I would verify that that child attended school in Asbury Park or one of the charter schools. If parents are sending their children outside of district, then they would need to provide me with proof of residency and something that shows their child's age. Once that information is verified, I will compile a list. Parents can come to the parking lot of City Hall at an assigned day and time and to pick up the activity bag or the beach card. They would have to also sign a waiver with regard to the beach cards as well. Another program that, oh, and regarding those two programs, we're going to get the word out tomorrow through social media, on a digital sign. I'm going to talk to Sonya about doing a press release. And I'm hoping that the Board of Ed will do a robo-call for us for parents ages five to 12. And I will be reaching out to the charter schools as well. The next program is for the older kids. It's the Ambassador Work Program. Usually, we hire junior counselors to work with us for our summer camp program, for the PAL summer camp program, and also as water park attendants. And none of that will probably be possible this year, so we've come up with this ambassador program. This will be a city-run program through recreation. The city will hire 12 Asbury Park youths between the ages of 15 and 20. They'll be selected from the school district as well as the charter schools. And they will be placed in the train station, on the boardwalk, on Cookman Avenue. And they'll provide individuals with masks if needed, city guides, directions, any information the chamber may want to get out. We've talked to Sylvia about that. And any other information the city may want to get out to individuals. They would be working six days a week, four and a half hours a day, weather permitting. If it rains, they don't work. They would be identified by t-shirts that would clearly identify they're city workers, that type of thing. And also, they would be provided with necessary PPE items that they need. If the children are under 18, again, the parents would need to sign a waiver saying that they can work. I have to get the wording for that and get it to our attorneys for review, but I'm in the process of doing that. A few other programs that are being offered. The Asbury Park Library is offering a virtual storytime. The details are still being worked out. And once that's finalized, I'll get that information out to the parents. Lake House Music, they usually do an in-person summer camp, not summer, music program, week-long music program. I provide the kids, they provide the lessons. This year, that will be done virtually. It's a free program, doesn't cost the city, doesn't cost the kids. I will just, again, be advertising that and encouraging kids to attend. They sent me an email today, they actually like to do a second camp. Usually, it's the first week in August, they want to do that one, they also want to do one in July. So that will happen. And lastly, the summertime surf camp. Every year, they offer our kids free surf lessons. And they'll be doing that again this year in conjunction with the Governor's Executive Order. More details will follow on that. And in a nutshell, that's what we're offering this summer.
Thanks, Leisha. Very comprehensive under our current situation. I think this is going to be a great asset to the community. And thank you so much for working so hard and putting all this together.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to second that as well, Leisha, because I know that you've been having conversations with the mayor and council on, you know, how we can keep our families that are in the recreation department active during the summer. So kudos to you, I love the beach badge idea.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Leisha?
Yes, Leisha, when is the basketball court going to be open again? And also the soccer at Bradley School? Because they're beginning to go over there regularly.
That, I don't know. That's a conversation, I guess, I can have with Donna. But right now, I have no timetable for that.
Yeah, so Jesse, I believe that the playgrounds, there's a date on which they can be open. Public Works is aware of that. So once that is permitted to be open, we'll open up all the parks. I don't have it right in front of me now. But there is a date, I think it's July 2nd, but don't hold me to it.
Oh, of course. You have kids over there, in fact, you have kids over there now at Bradley School. And a lot of the people, a lot of the kids are jumping the fence over to play basketball, so sooner the better. Okay, thank you.
But the Bradley School, that's Board of Ed property, so I don't know if they're going to open that. That I'm not sure about. The soccer field.
Like 15 kids over there now.
Yeah, I know, I see them too, I see them over there. I know what you mean.
That's what's the Board of Ed, Jesse.
All right, thank you.
So tomorrow, people will be able to find out how they go about getting a badge, getting a bag. We'll have that up on our, yep, okay.
Uh huh, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Leisha.
Thanks, Leisha.
Hey, we are going to move on now to items to be presented. The item number two, radio communication and IT upgrades, presented by Joe Delarazon, Director of Information Technology.
Hey, everybody. Before I get started, I just wanted to let you know that also on the line, we have Officer Vargas from the Technical Services Division of the Police Department, and Sergeant Casey from Community Relations. They're on the call to help answer any questions or address any concerns. So with that being said, we can move on to the first slide. All right, so our current radio system, without getting too detailed, consists of a series of transmit and receive sites throughout the city. And they work together, communicate with each other to create one system. So for the officer in the street, it doesn't matter where they are in the city. The system knows the site they're closest to and chooses the site that controls the transmission. But there's three main issues with this current setup. Number one is the way that they communicate are through Verizon copper lines. And this is an old technology that's over 100 years old. And if you look at the picture in the bottom right-hand corner, you've probably seen this before, a telephone pole with wires everywhere outside your house or outside a building. And these are actually the same copper lines that this radio equipment uses to communicate. Verizon's actually doing away with copper. They're moving everything over to fiber optics. And Asbury Park was actually notified that in September, these tie lines will be cut off. It was originally scheduled for this month, but due to the pandemic, they pushed it back a couple of months. The second issue we have is, this is not the actual equipment room that we have, but it's very similar. You could see these entire rooms of equipment to house everything. The equipment that we have is currently end of life. You can't get replacement parts anymore. And if there's a single failure in any one of these pieces of equipment in this room, or any of those Verizon tie lines, or any of the equipment in any of the buildings, your whole system can shut down, and you're at the mercy of a vendor or Verizon to come in and fix the problem. And number three is something called T-band giveback. It's actually federal legislation that was passed that you can't communicate on certain frequencies. And our current radio system actually happens to fall within this spectrum. So at some point in either 2021 or 2022, the plan is to not be able to communicate on these channels anymore. It's being challenged in court, so it could be delayed, it could be thrown out, but that's definitely something that we needed to keep in mind. So way back in 2016, we started planning for these three issues. And there was actually a bond ordinance that was passed in 2016 for communications upgrades throughout the city. So it really came down to, do we upgrade our current system or do we move to a regional system? And, excuse me, when discussing whether to upgrade our own system, we had to take into consideration the cost of the infrastructure, space for the infrastructure, FCC licensing costs, extended FCC approval process to get our own frequency, moving those copper tie lines over to fiber, and many others, but those are the three main obstacles that were in our way. So what we actually decided to do is move the police department over to the Monmouth County Sheriff's Department trunk radio network. And you could see that they actually have a North Region and a South Region. You can see the coverage as depicted in the red circles. So you get coverage anywhere in Monmouth County and surrounding counties. They've got multiple sites of redundancy. So if there is an issue with one of those tie lines or a piece of equipment, there's always a backup available. They use the latest radio technology. They're always updating the system. And they offer full encryption so that anybody from the public or anybody unauthorized to be able to hear or transmit on these channels can't. A couple of the benefits of moving over to the system are our neighbors, some of our neighbors, including our own fire department, have already switched over to the system. Neptune Police and Fire Department, the Sheriff's Office, the Prosecutor's Office, Parks and Public Works, OEM, they're already on the system. So everybody can talk to each other using just one device. So a couple of the additional benefits. All the equipment except for the actual radios, and that's what this purchase here tonight is for, are purchased and maintained by Monmouth County. So anytime there's an upgrade or anytime there's a piece of equipment that has to get replaced, it's on them. They have dedicated staff on call 24/7 to deal with issues. Whereas right now, if the radio system goes down at 3:00 in the morning, it's either myself or Officer Vargas who's getting called to come down to try to fix it. We get a wider coverage area, as discussed before, with those multiple sites. The fire department actually reported at once they were actually able to communicate from Jersey City back to Asbury Park. Whereas with the current system, you have to be somewhere around Asbury Park to be able to communicate. Also, kind of as discussed, enhanced communications between other departments and agencies. There's an opportunity for special event channels. For example, see here now, when there's an event, we have multiple agencies coming into the city. The county could just spin up a new channel for everybody to be able to communicate with each other. And the police channel can stay for just police emergencies. Once the event is over, they take the channel down. And finally, the outdoor ODAS. Mike, if you can go back two slides, please, to that map. So if you look closely at the red circles, you could see Asbury Park is right on the border of both the North and the South End. So what Monmouth County did is they committed to purchasing in what's called an ODAS. It actually stands for an Outdoor Distributed Antenna System that's going to be mounted on the wastewater treatment plant. And it's just going to help bridge the gap between those two systems, just to make sure there's no coverage issues where those two systems meet. So that's basically the rundown. Before I move on to the next resolution, if anybody has any comments or questions, myself and Officer Vargas or Sergeant Casey can certainly answer.
No questions from council? Okay, thank you. Joe, should this be passed this evening? How long of a timeframe did they tell you we could get these up and running?
It's about two months. And that puts us right in line with that Verizon copper line disconnection. So if this isn't passed tonight, we could run into a situation where we're not ready to go with the new system or the switch over, and our tie lines get disconnected, and we're going to have a major communications issue.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, you want to talk about the cameras?
Sure. So the next resolution deals with cameras along the beachfront. What the plan calls for is 12 cameras, starting at the casino, all the way to the Fisherman's parking lot. All the cameras would be pan tilt zoom, so you'd essentially get coverage from the ocean all the way back to Ocean Avenue. Besides the cameras, it allows the city to connect the beach office and the wastewater treatment plant to our existing fiber ring. And that's going to save the city some money because right now, the beach office and the wastewater treatment plant both have computers and phones, but they're not on our network. So they actually pay optimum for computer, excuse me, for internet and phone service, whereas those costs would go away. So the savings would be at minimum $5,100 a year. It could actually be more than that depending on more services that we bring over to our own network. An additional benefit would be the ability to add anything from computers, cameras, time clocks, phones, anywhere where we have that fiber range. So that would be from the casino to Fisherman's Lot. So one of the examples would be the possibility of credit card machines in the ticket booths. So here you could see a map of the south end of the boardwalk. And every one of these red circles is the approximate location of a camera. And you could see they're staggered, whereas one is on the east side of the boardwalk, one's on the west side of the boardwalk. And that's by design to try to get the maximum coverage area from the ocean to Ocean Ave. And then the next slide, same thing, but on the north end. The base map's a little outdated. It doesn't actually show the new boardwalk, but the same idea. And you could see, you get from the convention center all the way up to Fisherman's Parking Lot. With that, any comments or questions?
John Moore here. I'm just going to let everybody know, I've been asking questions all week. I'm not 100% sure I'm getting the correct answers. So as much as this has been something like, you know, if we start it tomorrow, it may not be done till, I don't know when. So I will be making a motion to table this until I get the answers I'm looking for. Thank you.
So Mayor, are there any questions that we can answer for you now?
I believe I've asked them all week, and I haven't gotten satisfactory answers. So I'd rather have a table tonight. And if you will say, okay, John, that's Donna, Michael, the IT people, DPW, and our engineer go together, and then you guys convince me this will work because having worked on the boardwalk for 31 years and knowing it, and knowing the hatches and everything on the south side, I just do not believe this can work at this point in time. So you're going to have to convince me.
So Mayor, and I know we spoke about the access. So Joe and Public Works staff did go up there on Thursday, and there is access to the conduit. Joe, can you talk about when you guys went up to the boardwalk and how you accessed the conduit up there?
Yeah, so the other day, myself, DPW, Superintendent.
I'm sorry to cut you off.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I even said a word. I'm just going to make a motion to the table. If you want to keep on talking, I'm just going to make a motion to the table.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Okay.
All right, we've got two more. Could you just go on to the next slide real quick? All right, so two more resolutions. The first one is security enhancements for City Hall and city-owned buildings. And the second one is spatial data logic software, which we already have for construction code enforcement, public works, fire prevention, and planning and zoning. And this is to add to Clerk's Office. And this will help with data sharing and also allow the public to be able to, for example, apply for permits or submit applications online without having to come into City Hall. And that's it for me.
Any question, comment?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, thanks, everyone else.
Okay, we are on to items to be presented. Number three, a discussion of a request of a right-of-way easement for 500 Grand Street for playground equipment, presented by Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment.
Give me one second, I have to just unmute Michelle.
Sure.
Okay, Michelle, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Michelle Alonso, the Director of Planning and Redevelopment. About a month ago, I had a request by Hope Academy Charter School to legalize the, an easement for the playground equipment that you see in the photo here. This is 500 Grand Street. Hope Academy will be purchasing this from a defunct daycare slash preschool. The daycare slash preschool, it's code up the playground equipment, I believe, maybe two decades ago. We have, or at least the initial equipment. We don't have anything in our files that gave permission for the equipment to go up. The area that you see in the photo is actually public right-of-way. Grand Street has a large swath where it appears to be people's front yards, and they are people's front yards, but they're also part of the public right-of-way. So Hope Academy, which is purchasing the building, has requested that we legalize their ability to occupy this front yard space slash street right-of-way with the playground equipment and the fence that you see in the photo. Mike, next slide. Here's the survey, and this gives you the plan view of what we're talking about, which is, the black line shows you the property boundary line. And if you can see, right outside of that, where it says ground surface proposed playground easement, that is the area that we're talking about tonight, where they've made a request to municipal council to have an easement for the playground equipment and for, you know, the children to use the equipment in that area. This is only on workshop tonight. If the council feels amenable to give a granting this easement, then we will prepare the ordinance for the first meeting in July. But that is basically, in a nutshell, it's for granting of an easement to a charter school for to retain the playground equipment in the front yard area fronting Grand Avenue. Does anyone have any questions?
So I do. It's I mean Chapman. So Michelle, if we grant an easement, this property permanently becomes part of the Hope Charter School, correct?
Yes, it becomes part of the grounds. It is an easement, we still retain ownership of it. But we're basically granting an easement for them to be able to use the property.
So they would only be using the property? So if they were to sell the building or that became some other type of business, that property would revert back to the city, correct?
No, an easement.
There would have to be some specific language in there to effectuate that. This is Fred Raffetto, City Attorney. Because an easement typically provides permanent rights to the grantee. So there would have to be some reversionary language in there to that effect.
But we could.
Which we can do.
But we could also lease that to them for maybe a dollar a year and still have it remain part of the city right-of-way, correct?
Correct, we can do that, that is an option. And as in the past, you would set a number of years when they would have to renew. It could be one year, it could be three years, it could be five years, it could be 10 years.
All right, thank you. I'm personally opposed to just giving the property away. I would rather us lease it, but that's my personal thought. I'd love to hear other questions and thoughts.
Michelle, this is Yvonne.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with Eileen. I would not want to give them a permanent easement that gives them the property. I would prefer that we do something that gives them a temporary easement. And if they sell, it comes back to us or the lease. But a permanent ease, I would be against that.
Okay, we can, if everyone feels that way, I don't mean kind of one-off. Any other council people want to go with a license agreement?
This is Kendall, I'd rather lease it. I prefer to lease it.
Okay, so I just would need to know, and you can, you know, you can let Fred know or me know, how many years would you like them to have to renew? Whether it's three, five, 10? We have done in the past three, because it's just easier than having to bring, you know, bring this before council every year.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, what about 10?
And I'm fine with 10.
So this is Donna Viero speaking. Why don't we, I'll talk to Michelle and Fred tomorrow. We'll come up with some language, because we'll have to talk to the purchaser as well. We'll come up to a number of years, and then we can put this on our next agenda for discussion again.
Great.
I have to say that they probably want, because they've been waiting a while, and this is, I believe, holding up a closing. So I would ask city manager, if we come to some kind of agreement before the next meeting, can we put it as a voting item? can we put it as a voting item?
Yeah, we can talk, we can talk about, uh, talk about it offline, Michelle. Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And this is Fred Raffetto, City Attorney. I would just recommend, and we can talk about this as well, that in addition to having a specific term of years that we put in there that, um, should they sell, that it ends the lease.
Correct, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, John Moore, John Moore, uh, Michelle, I'm not, I'm not blaming this on you, but I am not looking for the answer tonight. What does legalize mean? Obviously, this is something you inherited, so it was done wrong in the past. So we'll straighten that down the road. Uh, a, a question, not looking for an answer tonight. Like you said, Donna and you will have office conversations. Can we sell it? And then third thing, and again, this is not about you. It's about like, if we're gonna have Zoom meetings, we're gonna have to zoom in so the public can see stuff because I can't read all these little tiny words. On, yeah, on that picture.
I was gonna say, my key, my consuming it right now.
Oh, there you go. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, we may wanna.
But, um, we can, oh, go ahead, Fred.
Yes, once again, Fred Raffetto, City Attorney. We may want to go the route of a license agreement as opposed to a lease. Um, because a le, a lease, under the local lands and buildings law, if it's to a private entity, would require that it be awarded to the highest bidder after a bidding process, and that would hold things up.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what I want to talk, that's what I want to talk about offline, Fred. Yeah, that's actually, yep, absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Michelle, are you done?
I was gonna say, if there's no more questions, yes, um, I'm finished. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, we are, we will now move on to matters from council. Councilmember Chapman?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Melody.
You're welcome. Uh, Councilmember Clayton?
Hi, uh, I just want to remind everybody that July seventh is the, is the day that we vote for, um, the primary. And everyone should have received their mail-in ballot by this time. If they have not, um, they should reach out to the, um, county clerk. And if you were not a registered Democrat or Republican, then they did not send a ballot to you. You have to call and request it. So please don't forget to vote on July seventh. Thank you.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes, I would like for Donna, if it's all right with the council, to speak on the fireworks that, that's going around the city. Replace me today and speak on the fireworks.
Sure, Councilwoman Kendall. So as many of you are probably aware, there's been an influx of fireworks being shot off throughout the city and actually throughout the country. Um, this has been a, a, a new phenomenon that's been occurring, um, over the past month or so. So our police have received numerous calls on a daily basis, nightly basis. And what they have done is that they have assigned their community relations, uh, team to identify the areas in which they're, they're being shot off. And they'll continue to, um, enforcement of this. So it's being, um, addressed. And if you live in the city and you hear something, call as soon as possible. Don't wait, you know, an hour after hearing the loud noises. Call as soon as they start and that will give our officers, um, a better chance of identifying those who are shooting off the fireworks illegally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Um, yeah, just to the fireworks. My dog, I'm sure, not unlike many people's dogs in town, is destroying my house every time the fireworks go off. So the quicker we could like do something about that, uh, the better my, um, mental health will be. Uh, I want to thank DPW and, uh, Police and Fire and specifically, uh, Mike Manzella and Donna for the amazing job they did, um, on the first weekend of closing down streets in downtown. The reopen plan, I know that we're continuing to tweak it. We're learning as we're going along. Um, we're enjoying some of the feedback we're getting on what's working and what's not. But the amount of time that that, uh, continues to take up and the openness and willing to change of our city staff, um, getting that together every Thursday and now Monday morning, um, I want to give a huge, huge thank you. And I hope the business community, um, also is giving you all big thank yous for us closing down the streets and also waving, um, uh, quite, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars in cafe licenses. Um, uh, and, and my other question was the fireworks, so that's it. I'm done. Mayor Moore?
Yeah, that's the one. Uh, I agree with you. Great subject. And this brings to the level of, of, of.
Mayor, you have a bad connection.
John, yeah, you, I can't hear a word you're saying.
No.
I also keep hearing somebody's dog barking.
Any, any better?
No. Mayor, if you have your phone on speaker, maybe that's what it is. Maybe take it off speaker.
Do you want to move on to, um?
How about now?
There you go.
It's working? Okay. Phones confuse me. It, it didn't, it worked well when I was asking questions about the boardwalk, so. Uh, okay, so I, I agree with Amy and I echo it as far as like the staff did one heck of a job. And it wasn't just the CBD. It was Prospect. It was third and fifth. And those people really loved it. If the police department wants to give out tickets, like shooting fish in the barrel, Fourth Avenue, hey, hey guys, everybody speed on Fourth Avenue. So, uh, let's see some patrols and give out some tickets. Uh, I would ask everybody to continue to wear masks. I would ask everybody to continue social distancing. As Yvonne said two meetings ago, we are not out of the woods yet. Uh, again, today, three governors, be it New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, anybody coming from hot states, they're gonna have to be quarantined for fourteen days. So, uh, we're still don't know what we're dealing with. So again, please wear a mask, please social distance, and please just be respectful to everybody. Thank you.
On to matters from City Manager?
I have nothing, Melody.
Matters from City Attorney?
I have nothing, Melody, either. Thank you.
We are on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Kendall, move it.
Do I have a second?
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
None opposed. The meeting is now open to the public. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. I will give you a warning when there is one minute left. I am calling upon three six zero nine. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Three six zero nine?
Yes, my name is Joseph Romansky. I'm calling from the Santander Building. I am a longtime resident since two thousand and six, fourteen years. I wanted to let the City Council know the horrible crime and corruption, nepotism and drugs and parties that have been going on at the Santander. The Board has been notified various times throughout the month and emails have been sent out. They know who the perpetrators are. The Board has turned around and retaliated and they used the HOA lawyers against us. They sent out an email to the public of all the unit owners in the building stating that an occupant and owner is trying to tarnish the building of the Santander and its reputation. I have a respiratory and a heart condition. My doctors are the ones who contacted the state and the authorities. I, the smoke and the marijuana and whatever they're smoking is so bad in the hallways on a daily basis that you can cut the smoke with your hands. The police have been out several times and they told me that unfortunately they have to be able to smell it or locate it. There are certain guidelines. I have gotten contact high three times last week and two nights ago I was contact high. The police were here again yesterday for an altercation. The state fire marshals were here and there was a, a altercation with an employee in the building. Um, the Board uses the HOA lawyers against us. We contact code enforcement. The Board of Health has been contacted and I am currently working with, um, the City Manager and it seems to be going somewhere. The previous City Manager laughed in my face and didn't even want to be bothered with the Santander. Um, there's retaliatory emails that are sent out when someone notifies something. I come from a law enforcement family. I would never make false accusations. Uh, they sent out retaliatory information. My doctors have reported this information because per month I contacted.
One minute left.
And the management company about this and I get no response from them. There's biased hate in the Santander, reverse discrimination, and there's insurance fraud being done. There's leaks in the building and they make the owners put it through their own insurance company and they refuse to tell us where the leaks are coming from. And the leaks are coming from common areas and they're, what they do is they make the people put it through their own insurance and that's insurance fraud. So I want to thank for any help that you can give me. I am very scared for my safety in this building because the drugs and the party, the police were here three weeks ago, twice on a Friday night, and it's on my floor, on the fourth floor. And they do know where the problems are coming from and the police were just out here the other day. So I am very concerned because I have COPG and a heart condition. And what people do is their own business, but when it affects the other people within the community, that's a problem.
Time's up.
And my concern, thank you.
Okay, John Moore here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And then, okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, I was gonna suggest you get in touch with the City Manager Code Department. It seems you already have done that.
Yeah.
Again, yep, and anything and everything, be it this, fireworks, everything, should be called to the police department. The Watch Commander's number is seven three two five oh two five seven nine one. The main number is seven three two.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Seven three two five?
Five oh two.
Yes?
Five seven nine one.
Five seven nine one, okay.
And if that number does not pick up, call seven three two seven seven four one three hundred.
Okay.
And one of those two, one of those two numbers will pick up, I guarantee you. So I'm glad you talked to the City Manager. I'm glad you reported stuff to code. That's all we can suggest to people that they do.
Right, and I was with Board of Health and they were trying to tell me that it's all on the city and that's not so. So I am, uh, the City Manager is helping me. What disillusioned me is the previous City Manager laughed in my face at a meeting with him when I was discussing this information to him. So I am glad he is gone.
Okay, and, uh, I'm sorry, and don't take this the wrong way. After your, your three minutes, you should have been cut off. So we'll go from there. And again, I wish you the best of luck and I believe the City Manager and all the department heads will work together with you to solve this.
I am now calling upon three three five zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Ernest Mignoli, Santander, Asbury Park. So I'd like to, uh, add on to that. Of course, I always bring up that Asbury Park is the second, Neptune is the fifteenth, and Long Branch is the twenty-fifth of five hundred and sixty-five municipalities, most of which report into the FBI every year with their crime and violence and murder and stabbing statistics. And we are currently number two. Now, I refer to Asbury together, and don't take it personal, as the Twilight Zone Council because no matter how many times I say it at that meeting, I'm disrespected, I'm disparaged, I'm threatened, but the numbers speak for themselves. Asbury Park Police Department is rated one of the most internal crime corruption. Its internal affairs division should be disbanded, right? It doesn't do anything. The Monmouth County Prosecutor is made up of mostly, a lot of Asbury Park ex-police officers. So the oversight is zero. Police in Asbury can use excessive force, threaten people, be violent, corrupt, nepotistic, and the city and the Monmouth County Prosecutor does nothing with his associate, uh, Sean Golden, the sheriff, who does nothing with his associate, Freeholder Arnone, who does nothing. And by the way, this council, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, decide, with the Freeholder, Arnone, decided to go nationally to, in a, in a face of people getting sick, in my building especially, Santander, to have the nerve, the audacity to say, well, we want our bars to open up. That's all you do is open up bars in Asbury. Asbury has become worse than it was years ago when there was a bar on every corner, because that's where we're headed now. And Johnny Max should be closed down for violations of COVID, violations of law.
One minute remaining.
Violations of ABC, crime, corruption and, and complicity with the Asbury Park Police, who get paid from him, who do nothing. The man runs a bar. He has no receipts. I don't think he's paid taxes in a hundred years. And who controls it? The Asbury Park ABC, which I think is the mayor, council and the police. What kind of nepotism is this? And then you got Words Bookstore with the sexual crimes in there connected to the city officials. Let's hear about that. Why does everything being swept? And the City Manager has recordings of, of city employee threatening me and others at the Santander with bodily harm and she has done nothing with it, City Manager Viero. Nothing with it, nor has the police. And you've had it over a month and you have nothing to say because you're not so different from Mr. Capabianco, of which who you worked with.
Time's up. Uh, are there any comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, sir. And, uh, at the last meeting on June tenth, at minute number fifty-five, you said the City of Asbury Park was doing a terrible job of COVID. And that's your opinion. I greatly respect your opinion and how much you had been following it and talking about it since November. Well, John Moore being Board said, let me go back to the November seventh, twenty-sixth, December eleventh, December eighteenth, January sixth, January twenty-two, February sixteenth and March eleventh meeting. And you never once brought up COVID. So a little bit of honesty helps the time, sir. Thank you.
I'm now calling upon five one two four. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. Uh, you didn't say anything about the lawsuit that's happening between our great governor and our famous now, John Moore. And nobody said anything. Well, I want John to know that I stand behind him and if I can help him in any way, it's the council. All you wanted to do was have those businesses open up. In that, nobody realizes what a hard thing it is to run a business in Asbury Park. These people are going broke. They've been out of work for over three months and the governor, what does he care? He's sitting on forty-eight million dollars. That's all I have to say about that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the Recreation Department. I, as you know, I followed the bill resolution. And four thousand two hundred and something dollars was spent on a grab bag that Lisa sort of touched on from the Oriental Trading Company, which is a Chinese company. I don't think we should be buying anything from China right now. And that company is noted for all its Chinese merchandise. It's all junk to begin with. I think, I, I asked for, uh, I tried to get Tracy for two days to ask her for the requisition on that. I'd like to know how we spent four thousand two hundred dollars in the Oriental Trading Company. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was, it's not this council that did this, but, uh, there's a bunch of money going back to, uh, all the condos that have pilot programs. I, I had asked John about it and you did tell me about it, but I forgot what you said. I'd like to know why they're getting reimbursed. I know this council didn't do it. I would like to know which. I know this council didn't do it. I would like to know which council did it too, to give back money to all these pilot programs. Okay, and that's about it. And I, I'm, I'm happy that everything's going well again. And I don't think all of us should worry about the Chinese virus. That's what I call it. Okay.
Okay, Rita, thank you. You're, are you done, Rita?
Yes.
Okay, Rita, thank you. As far as like the reimbursements to the condo associations, that was not done by past councils. That was done by the state of New Jersey where cities have to pay condo associations for collection of garbage. So again, not by past councils, not by this council of state of New Jersey. And then, thank you for the compliments and I missed the rest of your questions. So Donna, is there's anything else out there? Go ahead.
Yeah, hi Rita. So regarding Tracy, she did say she tried to reach back out to you a couple of times. She just sent me a message. So we'll try to reach out to you tomorrow. And I think that was it. That's it.
Any more comments?
Next.
Okay, we're calling upon four eight six zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi. It's Maureen Nevin, Three D L A Court. Thank you. Quite a bit on the agenda tonight, so hurry up with this. One, the individual resolutions, twenty twenty one nine two through to one ninety-seven, were they subject to the bidding process? I know this is one for a lot of money here with Motorola, nearly nine hundred thousand dollars. Like to know about that. The ordinance, the one million dollar bond ordinance for the garage, how, what, what, what that money is, is to be for. I think, was, was there another one million dollars already in bonding already issued for that? And was there a feasibility study done about that project yet? It's a little bit confusing. Also, it's rather confusing about this amendment, twenty twenty one eighty-nine. Maybe you could explain that. Also, I wanted to ask about the Murphy versus Moore. Was that executive session held or not? Anyway, going, moving along. That was given in the section eight for a reference for the exemption from the Open Public Meetings Act. It would help a lot if we could institute something where the lawyer, Fred, for example, would, would say how that section eight for eight expressly is relevant to the situation. Because in, especially in this case, use as an example, everybody knows what the, what the lawsuit is about. I mean, you know, what are we really protecting there by going into the executive session?
One minute remaining.
Okay, the charges were dropped on Gustavo Martinez Contreras, who was arrested, of course, in connection with his coverage as a reporter for the Asbury Park Press, which the Attorney General said, we don't arrest in this country reporters or in this state doing their jobs. Has the city council issued a formal apology? Do you plan to? Would you elaborate on that? And the city manager, I think, needs to provide me with the employment-related West Side jobs data still. I'd like to check with her on that. And congratulations to Lisa Floyd for the nice summer program that she's doing. And the resolution one nine one, please explain where the money is coming from. All this mention of vouchers is, is a little confusing if you don't know
Time's up.
Thank you.
Okay, Maureen, John Moore, I'm going to be very brief. As far as what was discussed, as far as Murphy versus Moore, that's pending litigation. So will not be discussed. It's still ongoing. As far as the other questions of the press reporter, to the best of my knowledge, it's still under investigation and we have no knowledge of that. So I think there should be a discussion about that. As far as all the financial or legal questions, I'm going to turn it over to Fred and Donna.
All right, so Maureen, regarding the, the resolutions for one ninety-two and one ninety-three, these were approved in a bond ordinance back in twenty sixteen, so there was a public hearing on it. Motorola and Millennium are also on state contracts, so at the time, there was no need for a bid and they're, they're still on the state contract. Regarding the West Side jobs, I don't recall, I don't have information for you on that. I thought I had told you, but we can, I'll send you another email tomorrow. And I'll let Fred talk to you about the, the closed sessions.
So first, with regard to the financial resolutions that Maureen raised, as the city manager indicated, a number of them are purchases that are being made under state contracts and under the local public contracts law. When there is a state contract available and a municipality or other public entity chooses to avail themselves of purchasing the goods or services through the state contract, statutorily, we don't have to go through the bidding process. So I'll just clarify that one point. And then with regard to the Murphy versus Moore litigation, as the mayor indicated, discussions about the matter before the litigation occurred at the last executive session are privileged communications between attorney and client. And then after the litigation started, which the discussion that was on tonight's executive session, it being still ongoing litigation and also subject to attorney-client privilege, we're not at liberty to be able to reveal to the public the nature of the discussions, other than to alert the public that this topic was discussed under the litigation exception to the Open Public Meetings Act.
She's coughing. And somebody was just coughing. Could you repeat that last part?
That, I, my, I indicated that tonight's executive session was held under the topic of litigation. And given the fact, as the mayor indicated, that the litigation is still pending, there is a need for confidentiality and we're not at liberty to disclose the discussions that occurred in tonight's executive session, other than to let the public know that that was a topic that was addressed under the litigation exception to the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay, so, so the governor has not dropped the lawsuit?
No, the lawsuit remains pending.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I am calling upon nine four two two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ladina, Ladina Olds, fifteen hundred block of Bangs Avenue. Hi, I just have a few things I just wanted to address. The traffic on Bangs Avenue, the speed limit is twenty-five, but all traffic, including law enforcement, drives way above that. There's two schools and it's a residential area with children. That's number one. Number two, thank you to everyone who did follow up with me regarding the flooding on Bangs Avenue. And I have questions regarding redevelopment on the West Side. I'm not going to assume that there's no plans. This is only my second live meeting. But I noticed there's always a lot of communication and focus on the North Side and downtown. But I never hear anything about redevelopment or revitalization of the West Side of Asbury. I know there's not much participation coming from the side. But at the same time, there has never been. The only time we see any city officials or hear anything is during election time. So, but that being said, if people knew better, they would do better. You know, if you got people more involved. I can guarantee you, if you took ten people, only two of them know when the meetings are. I, I just noticed even with the new townhomes that replaced the Boston Way Village, it looks worse than when the Boston Way was there. Now it just looks like somebody just threw up some boards and there's nothing done to the
One minute remaining.
Nothing's done. I've only been on for one minute. I'm looking at the time myself. Um, it's just, I'm, I'm just confused. Like, is there no focus on the West Side of Asbury? And if it is, could you elaborate on what the plans are? Also, with recreation, I had wanted to just put out there, there's a website called Kids Bowle Free at Bradley Beach Bowling. Parents can go on there and register their kids ages two to fifteen, from twelve PM to five PM, five days a week, Monday through Friday. And their kids can bowl for free two games. So you can relay that information to the recreation director. But regarding the traffic and the revitalization of the West Side, what's, what's going on with that? Because you guys have done a great job with downtown and the North Side, but you can't say you're successful until all of Asbury has, is, is redeveloped.
So, so Mayor, we, we have
Are you done? I'm, I'm sorry. Is it Donna? I don't know.
Yeah, this is Donna. I'm sorry. Yeah, she's, she's, she's done.
Okay, so I'll go a little bit first. I'm glad people reached out to you. As far as the flooding, hopefully we can resolve that in the near future. As far as your description, as far as council not being, as far as some of your things, I, I agree with you and some disagree with you. So we'll just leave it at that. You have my phone, number, email. You can call me anytime you want and we can talk and probably open up a great conversation as far as what we can do better. As far as development on the West Side, the city owns very little land on the West Side. So we're not in the process of like meeting with developers because we're, we're not landowners. So they go around us and go to individual property owners. As far as like your bowling, suggesting great, great idea, but it's current to the governor. And I watched it yesterday on live TV, bowling is not open at this point in time. And then Donna, go ahead.
So we have our planner on the phone, Michelle Alonso, that can speak about the development. So Mike, can you unmute Michelle so she can answer some questions?
Hi, so this is Michelle Alonso. While the mayor's correct, we own very little property now on the West Side. The majority of the property we did own on Springwood Avenue, a few years ago, we did a lease agreement with the Michael Development Company. And a year ago, they had finished their, their apartment buildings and had leased them. That's a hun, one hundred percent affordable project. And even though we don't own along the West Side, we've been in dialogue with a variety of developers. And the latest project that's going to come online, but not yet under construction, it's still in the approval phase, is two oh one, three oh one Memorial Drive, which is approximately a hundred and eight units with twenty of them affordable. We're currently in dialogue with the owners of twelve oh one Memorial Drive for a multi-unit project there. And again, that would have a twenty percent affordable component. And what also many people don't see or, or know about is that we work with Interfaith to assist them with their affordable housing homeownership program. They've built most of those homes on DeWitt, but we've been in dialogue with them on where they can do homes in other parts of the neighborhood. And also another thing that's coming down the pike is that the Public Arts Commission just approved a new mural that is going to go on the historic Turf Club. That's across the street from Kula Cafe in the senior center. This is, it's going to be a very exciting art project. And I also finally remind everyone that about five years ago, we did our groundbreaking for Springwood Park, which was over ten years in the making. So there are things in the works, but sometimes it's, they're not, the inner workings of it's not very sexy, so you don't hear about that often. And a lot of these projects take a long time. So thank you.
And can I, this is, I mean Chapman, can I just add something to? Each of the council members has been hosting, up until this COVID pandemic, we've been hosting coffee with a council person at various locations around the city every couple of months, including Kula Cafe on the West Side, High Voltage, near the Transportation Center, a location downtown, a location in Northwest. So we've been spreading ourselves out into all these locations in order for people to come and ask questions like this and for us to just hear what people are saying and, and bring some recommendations back to the mayor and council as well. Hopefully we'll continue that again soon.
Any more, any additional comments? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to six zero two two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, Asbury. Regarding Rita's bill resolution pertaining to the recreation, underneath that, there was also a bill for two thousand and some odd dollars. I believe it said for locker. I'd like to know what that's for. Is it monthly, yearly, or whatever? Now, I have a couple of questions for resolutions. Twenty twenty one ninety-three, Maureen asked about it and you gave an answer for that, so I'll cross that off my list. Twenty twenty one ninety-eight, surplus property. I don't know what that is, where it's coming out of, and what exactly we're doing with surplus property. Twenty twenty twenty-two, twenty oh, twenty oh, two oh two, transfer from Sixth Gear LLC to six fourteen liquor, liquor license. I'd like to know the location of that. And also, with the tables out on the streets and on the sidewalks, does the city require a fee for that if you're using the right of way? Is the, the road free? And I'd like to know, if someone owns a piece of property, that's theirs, they're not encroaching on city proper, city right of way, and they're paying taxes on that property and they set up tables, why do they have to pay a fee? And that's it.
Thank you, Louise. The locker is, the city being short of space, not only, only land or any buildings, we have to rent facilities on the storage space. So that's a yearly bill for recreation. The surplus, selling surplus items, it's basically items that have been declared junk and not usable or worth it for the city to keep. You can see a majority of them are old leafback trucks, anything like that. And I forgot to ask Donna, I'm hoping like hell, that bulldozer on the beach that hasn't run in five years has been added to that list. And then, as far as the transfer, I'll let Melody explain that because it's, it's a person-to-person, place-to-place. So Mel, Melody, answer the liquor transfer, please.
Sure. Louise, that location that that will be placed at is six fourteen Cookman Avenue.
That, Melody, I'm sorry? Who is that, Melody?
It's going to, it's going to be placed at six fourteen Cookman.
Okay, and it's coming from where?
It's coming from an establishment that used to be called Scratch.
Okay, all right. And the other question was the fees for the tables out on the sidewalks, if there are, and if they're out in the street. And, you know, people are putting little tables and everything so they can have outside dining. So if you can answer me about that.
The city has waived all cafe fees this year, seeing how much our businesses have lost. lost and how many, like, businesses have gone under. So, uh, we waived off fees this year for cafe licenses throughout the city.
And if you could elaborate on that. Uh, this is Frederick Fettow, City Attorney. Louise, under ordinary circumstances, when, um, a restaurant, uh, whether it be on Cookman Avenue or on the boardwalk, would like to, or on Main Street or wherever, would like to utilize part of the city's right of way for a sidewalk cafe where they have tables and chairs for outdoor dining, uh, there is an application process and a fee associated with that. It's, it, there's a flat fee, and then also there is, uh, part of the fee is based on the square footage of the right of way that they're using, a price per square foot. Because of the unusual, unanticipated, unprecedented circumstances associated with the pandemic this year, the city has made a policy decision that we're not going to charge the restaurants for use of the outdoor public right of way areas, given current circumstances. But if that weren't the case, under ordinary circumstances, yes, they have to get a license and they have to pay the city and they have to, um, um, even at the current time, they have to, um, post an insurance certificate, meaning the city is an additional insured, and there are lots of items that they need to, um, verify with the city and take care before they are permitted to utilize the areas of the city right of way or the, the roadway. But we're not charging them this year.
Okay.
Can you send Donna an email?
All right. And, and this is Donna, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Mayor, we can hear you. Um, so one thing, uh, back to Rita's statement about the Oriental Trading Company, since you brought it up again, Louise, they're actually located in Omaha, Nebraska. They're an American company, we're not importing things from, from China, that's just the name of the company. And in answer to the mayor's question about the, uh, the piece of equipment, yes, that was added to the list.
The, uh, real, about, uh, all right, now you're telling me that, you know, due to the pandemic and everything, you're going to waive off fees. What about when you have private property, you're paying taxes on it, and you have to pay fifty dollars to put out tables and chairs? Frank Stelli, you want to look into it? This is what I heard recently. Why did they have to be charged fifty dollars to put tables and chairs or whatever on, on his own property that he's paying taxes on? It's not a city right of way, it's his own private property. Why does he have to pay fifty dollars? That's why.
I believe that was for the fee for the application, not for, um, a, a, outside dining cafe license.
I think that this should be looked into, though. So thanks for bringing that to our attention. Um, but typically, the, uh, the fees that are associated with the sidewalk cafe, um, are for use of the city's right of way. So if this is private property, um, you know, then, uh, there, there may be, um, a circumstance here where, um, there isn't a need for the permit that would otherwise be required if they were utilizing city right of way. So I think it's something that the city would need to look at.
Yeah, John Moore, look, look, we waived a hundred and thirty thousand dollars' worth of fees. If we mischarged somebody fifty dollars, of course, we will refund it.
Exactly.
Are there any more comments?
Next.
Yeah, so I, I just want to clarify, so probably what Maureen is talking about is that there is a permit application that everyone had to apply for. It's a fifty dollar licensing fee. Um, and that's probably what a permit to do that is for, but we will look into it.
Hi, I'm, uh, calling upon six nine four two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Carrie Butch, I'm at five hundred Dill Lake Drive. I just wanted to address a couple of things. First of all, John, thank you very much for doing the interview on A P T V. You did fabulous. You're educating the community on COVID. I very much appreciate it. Um, and I appreciate the folks from A P T V. getting that happening. And, um, I, I encourage you to do it more because I think that it was very, very valuable. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that right now, we're getting ready to pass the budget, right? Second, um, we're going to ready, load on the budget. Twenty-two percent of that budget is police, is the police, um, part of it, and then one point five percent of that is Health and Human Services. So it's great that I, that we're hearing that, um, we're doing a great job with the community on recreation. It's a, it seems like it's a village with the city and with nonprofits and with the county. But at the same time, I think we should, we should really take a look at that budget and, um, and move those numbers to be much more fair for Asbury for our community. And, um, I think it would avoid a lot of issues with overpolicing and, you know, really meet, meet our needs in our community for helping and, and healing and not criminalizing. So, um, the other part I wanted to say, ask you guys is about the C D B G money that came from, there's a, there's a line that says amendment to the C B D G plan. And that, I guess that has to do with accepting, I don't know, somewhere around the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars for, for the, um, from the CARES Act? Is that correct? Um, so I just want to get a little sense of where that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar is slated to go.
One minute remaining.
If we could get a copy of that, if we could get a copy of that, and also if, if C B D G funding, there could be some, a lot, a lot more community participation in that and, and deciding on, on where that money goes. Um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And, uh, when they invite me back, I'll be there. So I'm waiting on their phone calls. Uh, let me just, uh, it, it was a major money, but when we first started with the budget, social services had X amount of money in their budget. And then with COVID, X plus Y was added to the budget where we increased the hours increase of the budget. So, uh, we did do that. Uh, and as, uh, I think it was two hundred and forty-three for the C D B G. And none of it has been earmarked yet, uh, as far as specifically where it's going to go. We're going to get two hundred requests, but it cannot go two hundred places. So that's a decision down the road. And then I'll let Donna answer the other questions.
Um, regarding the C D B G, I think that was the last one. Um, we haven't identified everything yet. We, we're having another meeting early next week. And once we have identified where that money is going to go, we will certainly, um, let everyone know. But there are public hearings that the public is invited to. Cassandra Dickerson is in charge of that, and she has posted a few of them. So we'll be sure to maybe get that information out a little bit better. Um, but we haven't decided yet. Um, we've been working with Doug Schultz, our Social Services Director, and Karen, our Senior Director, on some ideas of what we can do, um, for them, for, for that CARES Act. So that goes to your, your previous point about the, the percentage of the budget. We're looking to put most of this CARES Act into our Social Services Department. That's it.
Okay. Any additional comments? Okay, I am now moving on to Nicole Harris. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, this is Dan Harris, um, talking for Nicole Harris.
Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, we both have our hand raised, so he wanted to take three minutes and I wanted to take three, but we could do that separate times.
Okay. Um, one, I went and, to part in a, excessive fourth webinar hosted by the Attorney General today, and I would advise our city council and our, and mayor to look at it and get it on YouTube. It's very enlightening, and we could use some of the stuff they were talking about. Second, I want to read something that I'm going to have published this week called Don't Erase Our History. This past week, I had a chance to reflect on the past. I remember the deaths of J F K., M L K., Malcolm X., and R F K. I remember marching next to my father on the Asbury Park Boardwalk for civil rights. I thought how many students at Neptune sat there demanding black history courses. And then Springwood Avenue burned. In the beginning of close to fifty years to neglect, the stores and jobs were gone, no investors stepped forth, and the main strip of the southwest quadrant became a wasteland. Now there's partial rejuvenation of Springwood Avenue. There's a senior sitter, new housing, the return of a bus stop and a park. Oh, yes, a park. When the city was about to open the park, a group of citizens was assigned by the city council to come up with a name for the park. The committee was formed, the names were entered, and in the end, that the name of Dr. Haas was presented to the city council. This was based on the fact that he was the first black city councilman. He served as a doctor for the Asbury Park Board of Education, where he also helped place many young students in college. But during the summer of, and of nineteen sixty-nine, he showed a great act of courage and kindness. Many people hollowed shot by the police and the state troopers. Local people were afraid to go to Fritken Hospital, also known as Jersey Shore Medical Center. Dr. Haas proceeded to set up a triage center at the West Side Community Center. No one will know how many lives he saved. Based on this act of bravery and a lifetime of dedication-
One minute remaining.
-decided to name the park in his honor. The council, many who were not here during those tumultuous times, said no. Little did they understand the underlying, the underlying message of their decision. First, they said that this man's effort or act of bravery should be forgotten. Second, let the ride be known as a nameless act of the downtrodden. And third, just forget of what he did. Dr. Haas practice remained located in the southwest quadrant of the city until he retired. I remember him coming to our house when we were sick. We call those house calls. If you didn't have eight dollars for the house call, you could pay them later. I refused to accept this decision of the city council. I've watched the park become the centerpiece of social and cultural Renaissance. People of all cultures and religions take part in these activities. We now have another chance at this time to rewrite history in our city. And I, how many of our council learned about Juneteenth? Now, how many have read the miseducation that is taken by Carter G. Woodson or Forty Million Dollars by, Forty Million Dollars Slaves by New York Times writer William C. Roden? How easy would it be to council to rewrite history through the renaming of our culture?
Okay, Dan, your time's up. And I, I thank you for your comments, and I appreciate them. And we've had these discussions in the past. I thank you. I, I look at that, what you said at the beginning. Uh, as far as like, uh, the park, give me a call, let, let reopen that subject because you know and I know that we did this several years ago, and there's, as many people said that's named it for somebody, as, there's many people just saying, well, when I was in Vietnam or when I was in Guam or everything, and I said, I was in Asbury Park, they said, where the hell is that? And they said, Springwood Avenue. And people knew where Springwood Avenue was. So it's, it's an open conversation, like Amy said, everything's on the table. So give me a yell, and we'll start working on it again.
Are there any more comments?
Uh, so I'm just going to say that I was also on that webinar, Danny, and I, uh, took notes, and, you know, I thought it was a helpful and hopefully forward-thinking policies from the, um, from the Attorney General.
Yeah, this is, uh, Council McKenna. I just wanted to say I'm glad to see that you're up and out. I understand that you have surgery. All right, hang in there.
Hey, I am calling upon five seven nine five. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, folks. Good evening, folks. This is Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Hello?
Hello.
Go ahead.
Yeah? Oh, am I on? Okay, great.
You're, you're on.
Okay. I, uh, I called in to, uh, make comment on, uh, the consideration of five hundred Grand Avenue and granting an easement. Um, as city historian, I'm obligated to remind the council and the administration that they are the stewards of Asbury Park's cultural heritage. And that cultural heritage includes the city plan and public rights of way and public spaces. Um, in listening to the presentation, several issues come to light that concern me greatly. Uh, one of them is that this is an illegal taking of public property dating back, uh, apparently two decades or more. It's not only a playground, it's a fenced-off area that has permanently removed a part of public property. The other thing is, um, is this even a legal use? What does the zoning say? Can you put a playground in your front yard? That has not been addressed. In looking at the site plan, I see that they're requesting the continuing use illegally of a twelve-foot piece of public property. I don't think anyone has actually noticed, but they have a property to their north of the building of fifteen feet. They have property to the south of their building of twelve feet, and they have property to the east of their building of ten feet. Giving easements and removing public rights of way from public inventory is not to be treated lightly. It should only be done in a hardship-
One minute remaining.
...condition, such as the need for a handicapped ramp or where all other opportunities to do a public benefit cannot be accommodated. This should certainly be rejected outright. It does not meet the city plan, uh, requirements. It's not consistent with the city plan and preserving Asbury Park's city heritage. There's liability issues, as children are out there playing essentially on e- equipment that is on a public right of way. So there's a lot of issues that need to be taken. I'll, I'll address them, uh, in the future with a memo to, uh, management. And I have one further question. Uh, what is the status of the arcade at Convention Hall? This deals with, uh, public access also. There is an easement through the arcade, a, uh, public access easement. That's part of the redevelopment. Is that being adhered to?
Uh, Warner, it's John Moore. Uh, number one, I thank you for your comments as far as the easements. You've been consistent about this. You raise good points, and we'll take those into factor before any decisions made. As far as your last thing, as far as the arcade, Madison Marquette declared Convention Hall Paramount to be a mall. So the governor's opened up malls as far as Monday, the twenty-ninth. So the city has been in touch with Madison Marquette and said malls are now open, so we want a twenty-foot easement through the arcade from the north boardwalk to the south or, or south to north. So that will happen Monday morning.
Any additional comments? Not hearing any. I'm moving on to nine seven four two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Sylvia, Sylvia from the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. I hope everybody's doing well. Um, I had just a couple of things. Um, one, um, uh, regarding the first week of reopening, um, some of our, our merchants, I wanted to say thank you to the mayor council and, um, city manager and assistant manager. And I, I try to always call and, um, and acknowledge the work that you guys do and, and the departments. Um, but I don't know if everybody is aware exactly how much planning, um, had to go into getting everything running and having things run, run, having things run safely and, um, and efficiently and, and our fire and E N C. and, um, D P W. I'll tell you, those guys and women, they, I, I have never seen anything like it. They were unbelievable. And, um, and our police department has, um, never shined even better than now. Um, everybody was just fantastic, and, you know, people are certainly anxious and, and hopeful, though. And now it seems as though hopeful is starting to outweigh the anxiety. And I know that this community will certainly right its ship. It will be a long road, and I appreciate how, um, supportive and open all of you guys have been to all of our suggestions and including the chamber in, um, in, in the planning and, um, taking some of our, um, information. Um, uh, secondly, uh, I just wanted to let everybody know, uh, if you haven't heard that yet, that the high school is doing their graduation on, uh, July tenth. Um, the chamber is partnering, partnering with Initial Impact to do, um, gym bags for all of the students. There's about a hundred graduates. Um, we are, we're also collecting, you know, small tchotchkes, um, and-
One minute remaining.
-small gift certificates to put in them if anybody, any businesses would like to donate, that would be terrific. Um, and, uh, lastly, on Monday at nine A M., um, there will be a Zoom conference, um, that is hosted by Davison, Eastman, You Knows, and Payone about, um, operating businesses- and, um, liabilities and laws during this time. Um, anybody that is interested in participating, and we've already got quite a few, please email me at Sylvia, that's S-Y-L-V-I-A, at asburyparkchamber.com, and I will give you the Zoom information. Um, this is a really hot topic right now and I think will be going forward. Um, that is everything, thank you so much for, for everything, stay safe, everybody.
Is there any response?
Yeah, thank you Sylvia, and continue to do the great job working together with the city, uh, and we appreciate everything you're doing.
I am calling upon Nicole Harris, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Nicole Harris, Seventeen Ridge Avenue, High School, Brooklyn, Jersey. So, uh, to attend the webinar today on the use of police, of use of force. Um, and I also, um, asked to participate in the recent discussion with, um, Senator Van Gogh Pa and Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn was on that, uh, in that meeting as well. Um, I really, really would like for the council to take a serious look at our, uh, police department, specifically our internal affairs, uh, division. A number of members in this community, including members of my own family, and you're all aware of this already, have been, um, victims of police brutality in the city of Asbury Park. And while it is wonderful that we are having these discussions, I think that the time has come for us to take a serious look at ourselves, look within, looking to know. Um, I, for one, was personally lied to by the internal affairs department of the city, of, of the police department at Asbury Park. Um, and I go on record saying that, I was lied to, uh, when, um, presenting a complaint for my own family. Now, the sad part about what happened when my family decided to make a complaint is that there were other people in the community who came, uh, to us because they were either scared or somehow convinced not to make a complaint when they themselves were victims of, also. I think we should get ahead of the curve.
One minute remaining.
I understand that, um, the Attorney General is expecting some data from cities, I think by the end of the year. However, I did see that the mayor of Patterson, um, that he is, uh, trying to pull up the information, so I'm not saying this incorrectly, incorrectly, but that Patterson will, will be releasing twenty years of police, uh, records. Um, kind of trying to get ahead of everything, I think Asbury Park should do the same. I'm sure the members of the council want us to have the absolute best police department that we can have. Um, and I don't, I am not convinced that that's what's happening right now. Yes, we can talk about, you know, the, the good and, and everything, and, and there are good things that are happening within our city, but our police department is far from having corrected problems or anything that they have done, uh, to abuse people in this community, specifically brown and black people, and so I am asking the council to take a serious look at that and to get ahead of the curve.
Time is up.
Hey, Nicole, John Moore here, and, uh, thank you very much. And again, like Jesse said, I'm, I'm glad your dad's doing well, your mom's doing well, and I'm glad you're doing well. Um, again, as Amy said on that call that you were on, like, uh, everything is on the table in Asbury Park. I think we're probably the only town in the state of New Jersey that said that. Uh, so it's not BS, everything's on the table. As far as being ahead of the curve, I think our police chief and the police department came out with a great release saying that from here on out, every police officer will be wearing body cameras. Because body cameras leave no doubt, you're, it's either good or it's bad, then, but there is no doubt. Uh, and as far as the internal affairs division, uh, I know you, you're, you have more power than me and Amy. You were able to see the camera and the filming of the incident you're talking about. And Quinn and myself asked three times to see if we have never seen it. So, uh, again, I think we're moving forward, I think, with discussions that continue, and that's the key thing. This cannot be like, let's kick the can down the road. This cannot be like, just like, throw it underneath the rug, this has got to be like, no, this is like, this is ground zero. And let's move forward, and believe me, the city of Asbury Park is totally with you and everybody else, like, we're open for anything and everything. But we need dialogue, we need discussions, and we'll go from there, and we're open to any discussions.
Any additional comments? Okay, not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Move to close?
Ten, no second.
All in favor?
Right.
None opposed. The meeting is now closed to the public. We are on two minutes, I have the executive session minutes of June tenth and the regular meeting minutes of June tenth. Do I have a motion, and please identify yourself?
Ten, no, no more.
Clayton, second.
Hey, I will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to individual resolutions, we have Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-One, which is a resolution approving the payment of bills. Council member Chapman is abstaining from Twenty dash zero one three six two, Twenty dash zero one five two zero, Twenty dash zero one six four zero. Do I have a motion?
Quinn, move it.
Ten, no second.
I will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Okay, we are on to Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Two, which is a resolution awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions, Inc., Group for Police Department Radios, do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman?
Second.
Ten, no second.
Any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Okay, uh, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Three, which is the resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communication Group for Cameras. Do I have a motion?
Ten, no movement. John Moore, well, I'm sorry, it's John Moore, and Fred can correct me if I'm doing this wrong. Uh, I want to make a motion to table this.
That's right, yeah.
Should we move forward first?
There would need, well, no, uh, a motion to table can be made immediately.
Okay.
It would need to be seconded.
Second to table, Quinn. Okay, I will now move on to the roll call to table. Council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council, council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Three has been tabled. We're now on to Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Four, which is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a dry cake grit separator for the sewer plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
I will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of an automatic cart washer for the wastewater treatment plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton. Second, Chapman?
We'll now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Six, which is a resolution authorizing the purchase of additional access control security system. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Seven, which is a resol- resolution authorizing the purchase of SCL software for the municipal clerk department. Do I have a motion?
Ten, no move it.
Quinn, second. I will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Eight, which is a resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman?
Second, Clayton.
Second, all right, we will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Question, que, uh, I'm sorry, question. Uh, did I hear the city manager said the bulldozer does not run has been added?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, I was on mute, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? We'll now move on to the roll call, I had a, a motion in a second, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty Twenty One Ninety-Nine is a resolution authorizing a substantial amendment to the city community development block grant, CDBG, annual action plan for fiscal year twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Ten, no move it.
Did I have a second?
Clayton, second.
Okay, thank you.
Clayton, second.
I will now, thank you, I will now move on, are there any questions or comments? I will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution Twenty Twenty Two Hundred, which is a resolution authorizing T and M Associates to prepare an NJ DOT grant application. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman?
Second, Clayton.
Second, thank you. I had a motion in a second, I will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution Twenty Twenty dash two zero one, authorizing the award of a contract regarding the operation of a seasonal concession involving the rental of stand-up paddleboard, kayak, and other recreational devices to the public in the designated area of Deal Lake. Do I have a motion?
Before we move it forward, I'll just indicate that, um, there were two blanks in the resolution for the fee for twenty twenty, and that is because it had not yet been determined what the charge was going to be, given the fact that the contractor would have, under ordinary circumstances, been able to have started up this concession as of the second weekend in May, but because of the pandemic and not being allowed to start up until, um, the, the governor gave the authorization for outdoor sports that involve, uh, that do not involve person-to-person contact to start up as of, um, this week, essentially. So their first opportunity to get this up and running after being awarded the bid tonight would be this, this coming weekend. The council has determined to prorate the fee. The fee that was proposed in the RFP was five thousand and one dollar for the year, summer season of twenty twenty. Given the proration of the number of days that are left, um, the fee will be three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, and there will be no change, obviously, to the fees proposed for the next two years, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And the contractor will be paying the prices set forth, yeah, as in their response to the RFP. But the two blanks will be filled in with the number three thousand two seventy-five.
Thank you, Fred. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to move? Thank you.
More, move.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Ten, no second.
And now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution Twenty Twenty dash two zero two, which is the resolution to approve a person-to-person and place-to-place liquor license transfer from Sixth Gear LLC to Six Fourteen Liquor License LLC. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman?
Clayton, second.
And with a motion and a second, I will now move on to the roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are now on to ordinances for introduction. We have Twenty Twenty dash nineteen, this ordinance was introduced and passed in March of twenty twenty as ordinance Twenty Twenty dash three, but due to an unintentional defect in publication, it is required to be reintroduced. We have, it is now Twenty Twenty dash nineteen, a bond ordinance providing for the construction of a parking garage at the transportation center of City Hall, Phase One, a transportation utility improvement, buying in the city of Asbury Park in the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jer- Jersey, appropriating one million therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof with a public hearing date of July eighth. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman?
Ten, no second. More, more questions, more questions. Since this is gonna be put on hold, why July eight, let's go for the second meeting in July?
Do you want to push?
Well, Donna, Fred, anybody can correct me, if you say it has to be done July eighth, fine. And what, it costs us more to advertise it, and then it's gonna be like, I'd rather have this as a, like, maybe a public session than a Zoom session, because I think this is gonna draw a lot of questions. And again, if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so, so this was already adopted, as Melody said, back in March, this was the, the million dollars to continue the, the work on the parking garage. Um, so I, I think it's important that we, we correct the error that was made, so we're not in any violation of, of any type of, of spending. Um, I don't know when we'll be able to have the public back in council chambers. Um, I know that we're hoping to get all of us, at least in council chambers, in July. Um, if we're able to get, um, residents or the public into the building under, you know, whatever guidance the governor gives us, there's a chance we might be able to hold this in person. So I would recommend that we continue with this, um, and if we can't do it the first meeting in July, perhaps we can do the public hearing, the second meeting in July, when everyone is able to come into council. the second meeting in July, when everyone is able to come into council chambers.
You convinced me it should be July 8th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, um, I had a motion and a second. I will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes, sorry.
Mayor, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are now on to second reading, public hearing. We have, um, 2020 dash 189. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on 2020-189, which is the resolution to amend the 2020 calendar year budget?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Uh, members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record and your comments can only be about the budget amendment being presented for the public hearing.
Okay, it's more, before we go to the public, either the city manager or the city attorney give a brief definition about what this is so everybody knows what they're talking about. Please.
Okay, this is the city manager. Um, in the preparation of the budget, there was an item, a payment on a bond that was, uh, not included in the budget. So as such, we had to make an amendment to the budget to add that payment and that's why we had to, um, that's why we're having our public hearing. So this is not about the budget, this is just about the amendment to the budget. We already had our hearing on the budget at our last meeting, which we're not having tonight. This is just to the amendment to the, the budget.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page.
You're welcome.
Okay, I am calling upon Rita Moreno. Rita, please state your name and address for the record.
Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. Which bond issue is this that we overlooked?
Rita, it wasn't a bond issue, it was a payment in one of the bonds that, um, our CFO just neglected to put on. It was just one of our payments. I don't have that in front of me, I don't think. Um, and I don't believe Joanne's on the phone with us tonight, but I can certainly, uh, email you back. It's just a payment for one of our, the, the several bonds that we have. It wasn't anything specifically.
And could you give us the exact amount?
It was 300 and some thousand dollars. I don't know that I, um, you give me a minute. I will see if I can find it. Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, Rita. I can, um, I'll have to get back to you. I don't have that here because I'm not at the office, obviously.
Okay, so when you do the amendment, now it changes the budget, right?
Nope, does not change the budget. The budget remains as was introduced.
It does?
Yes, with, with the same tax cut.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to know. Yeah.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, I am calling upon Maureen Nevin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Maureen Nevin, Three Deal Lake Court. Um, did I hear correctly, was that a $300,000 payment that was, uh, in error, was, was not made?
No, 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 it wasn't not made. Every year we have to budget in our budget for the payments we have to pay on our debt. So there's a whole list of, of payments that we have. This payment just got missed. It just wasn't carried over, that's all. So we're budgeting it, but we can't pay it this year. I'm sorry?
Uh, if you go ahead.
So, so we have to put our debt payments in our budget and there are several payments that we make. Each bond has a different amount. This one just got missed when our budget was being prepared. So each budget is reviewed and upon the review of our budget, it was noted that this payment was there the previous year and it wasn't here the next year. So we had to just amend the budget to add it.
So, so, but, but that payment was a $300,000 payment though, right?
Yeah, it'll be paid this year out of the budget as the rest of our debt is paid. Yeah, we, we have debt payments for other bonds.
Yeah, I ju- I just thought it was unusual that, you know, a, a, a payment of that size could be, um, a minute. Hello?
I, I don't know what, I could, I don't know who that was.
Yeah, someone was able to break in there. Um, and, and we don't know what the bond, uh, that particular bond was for, right?
Uh, it's, it's one of the, the bonds that are outstanding. If it's that, you know, I'll find out exactly what bond it was. It, you know, we have several bonds that we pay debt on, you know, that have been, you know, they're, they're, you know, four or five years old.
Yeah, yeah. Do you know what our bond debt is up to? Yeah?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay, I'll, I'll, um, follow up with you then on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, not seeing any other hands raised. Do I have a motion to close 2020-189 to the public?
Move it, Kendall.
Okay, um, I have, Councilmember Kendall with the move. Do I have a second?
Second, Chapman.
Okay, I will now move on to the roll call. A motion to adopt 2020-189. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to 2020-188, which is the budget resolution which incorporates the amendment that was just approved. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Ken, no second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Are there any additional comments or questions before we move to adjournment? Not hearing any. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody stay safe.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.